It's just like strip malls. There used to be a big demand for those. There's guys around here that'll build them and gosh, they couldn't put anybody in them. Went broke. That market has changed, so.
Maybe we can get Amazon to come here.
Well, there's some of the new congressmen that want to break them up. They got big, so let's break them up. Okay?
They're not going to New York until they can come here.
They want an east coast residence.
There we go.
It's pretty similar.
That's what we should do. We should make a pitch to Amazon to come to Roy.
No, they want on the east coast. We're not east far enough.
Well, they didn't do many favors last time.
They're looking at Virginia now. But they've had pro- some of the New York protesters have fined if you don't want them on. There's a lot of people that do. Uh-oh. Somebody unplugged your machines?
They shouldn't.
I was interested in the bill about the change in the taxes for services versus...
Well, now they want to- one of the proposals is they can't get it passed, so they want to raise the food tax. They've got a huge surplus, and why are they messing with this? I, you know, they want to raise some more taxes. It's like, more logic doesn't...
I kind of thought that it might help out Roy since most of our stuff is service-based versus retail. How we don't make any money from car washes.
But it's not all services. It's only certain services.
Well, the lockbox concept on that one was insane because they basically, they'd cap your revenues as they are as of this year. And then everything else would go into a lockbox, but they would never define how that would be redistributed. And that was where all the entities and stuff were like, well, that makes no sense at all. You've got to explain how you would, what you would do with those other revenues. And they, they never did define that.
These are politicians that don't have to make sense.
In fact, I think they get kicked out of the club if they do make sense.
Okay, it's time, isn't it?
Yep. We're close. There we are. Okay, this is the time set for the Roy City Planning Commission regular meeting held in the city council chambers on this date at this time. A notice has been published and posted according to law. Therefore, I open the meeting. And we'll start with item number one, which is a declaration of conflicts.
How about a pledge of allegiance?
Right after we say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will now proceed with item number one, declaration of conflicts. Are there any of the commissioners that have conflict with anything that is on this agenda today?
I would prefer not to discuss the school district one, where I'm an employee of the school district. So, item number five with the zoning and all of that.
So, an item number five, when we get there, you recuse yourself.
Thank you, yes.
Okay. All right, then let's move on to item number two. We have the minutes from the December 11th, 2018 meeting. Are there any additions or changes or comments about them? There being none, is there a motion to approve the minutes of December 11th, 2018?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number three is the approval of February 12th, 2019, regular minutes. Are there any changes or additions to those minutes? There being none, I will accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? There being none, those are also approved. Okay, we'll move to item number four. This is a public hearing to consider a request to amend Title X zoning regulations adding RE 15 to the following sections. Chapter six, establishing of zoning districts, 10-6-1, 1B, 10-6-2, 1, and chapter 10, general property development standards, 10-10-29, 4. Mr. Parkinson, I believe that you would take over here.
This is the fun and enjoy it. When we created back in December, when we annexed in the unincorporated islands of Weaver County into Roy, we established a, an RE 15 zone. It was promised to the residents that they would have the same rights and privileges as those within the RE 20. So, when we created the zone and put it in the table for all uses and stuff, I thought we were done. Until a young lady came and said, okay, I'd like to build a barn, a pole barn on my property, gave me the dimensions, and I went, uh-oh. There's a section of the ordinance that says that RE 20 can have up to 2,500 square foot, but all other zones can only have a 1,250. So, wow, I need to put RE 15 in that category. And then I looked at the zoning districts itself. I need to put it in there. So, that's where these come in. So, intent section, or Title 10, 6, 1, zoning districts, just within the definition of a residential estates district, want to, need to add in residential estates for RE 15. In section two of that same chapter, here you kind of have what the residential estate districts are, has the two zones. So, install RE 15 and then take out RE 20, because before it was just real residential estates, RE 20, but now there's a multiple zones in that. So, I just say residential estate districts, and then it kind of gives a definition. And then to the section that I went, uh-oh, to was Title 10, chapter 10, section 29, on the size of accessory buildings, where it mentions RE 20 and RE 15 zones have a limit of, and it kind of goes on through the definitions. So, staff would recommend approval of adding the RE 15 in those three sections of the zoning ordinance. Now, I haven't gone through, and I don't see any others that I need to insert this into. So, I'm hoping I'm done.
And if not, we will entertain this again then.
Yeah.
All right, this is the time set for a public hearing on this matter. I will entertain a motion to open for a public hearing.
I move that we go into public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, we are now in public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak to us on these changes? If you do, come up to the, come up to the podium, go to the mic, state your name, your address, and tell us whatever you want to say.
So, my name is Luke Albertson. Address is 2595 West, 5725 South in Roy. I'm just a student of design engineering and had to come and attend a city planning meeting as an assignment. So, no comments on this specific change. I just wanted to let you know that I'm here observing you for an assignment from Weaver State.
So, like, like us, you're required to be here?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I just wanted to see how the planning meetings work in one part.
Usually, there's a few more people.
I can't gather them.
These are changes, technical changes. You heard what he was saying to some things that we've done before. Well, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have anything else to say, raise your hand, and we'll, we'll listen to you. Okay. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in the public hearing? There being none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we go out of public hearing.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. No nays. Okay. Then, I will accept a motion on item number four set forth in the planning commission agenda for this date.
Now, is this a recommendation to the city council?
Yes.
Do we have the, okay.
Just a recommendation.
I, I recommend that we approve this, or recommend that we send this to city council with our approval. As for the proposed ordinance changes, as noted in exhibit A.
I'll second that. Okay.
Yep. Commissioner Collins?
Aye.
Chair Brand?
Aye.
Commissioner Payne?
Aye.
Commissioner Bills?
Aye.
Commissioner Karas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparr?
Aye.
Commissioner Calley?
Aye.
Motion passes. This does go on the city council agenda for 19th of March.
We'll move on to item number five on the agenda. This is also a public hearing to consider a request to amend Title X zoning regulations, chapter 10, general property development standards, 10-10-24.
Can if you want. Or you can wait for, yeah, once it's done, you come back for commissioner's minute and...
Okay. Will the record reflect that?
Commissioner Bills?
Commissioner Bills.
Yes. Commissioner Bills has recused herself and has removed herself from the meeting here and has stepped outside and is no longer present. Give it to Steve.
Mr. Parkinson? As you mentioned, this is a request to amend the zoning ordinance. In this case, it's for non-residential buildings in a residential zone. As mentioned back, I think it was last meeting, February 12th, where we discussed it, that Weaver County School District is building a new Roy Junior High on the same parcel as the existing one. So, they're using the open space that they had to, to build it. The state statutes do exclude them from many items within zoning ordinances and building, but there are some things that they still are required to do, one of which is setback from property lines and height restrictions. The issue came when, huh, when we shut them down for building because they didn't have a SWIP plan. Then it became apparent that what they were wanting to do, and staff has informed them that they are inadequate on their setbacks and that their building is three feet too tall from what the zoning allows. So, after discussing it with the, the school district and our city attorney and the mayor, it has come that we perhaps look at what other cities throughout the area, and I just went to two other cities plus our, our ordinance prior to 2005, on what they require for non-residential buildings in a residential zone, schools and stuff like that. So, in the, in the staff report, you have South Ogden that has, you know, different setbacks and different requirements. In the R3 zone, they have no limit on height. Side yard setbacks is 20 feet plus one foot for every foot over 35, and then a rear yard of 30. Ogden has similar things within their R3, R4, and R5 zones. Again, but they still have a rear yard setback of 30 feet and the sides of 20 plus one foot for, one foot for every foot over 35. Can't spell it out. When I looked at our pri- our ordinance prior to 2005, and 2005 is when current ordinance was adopted, as we have it today, our ordinance at the time for R2 had a 20-foot side yard setback, a 30-foot rear yard setback. And then the R3 and R4, they had a 45-foot height limit. And then the side yard setback did change. And the R3 was 20 feet plus one foot for every, everything over 35. And the R4 was 16 feet plus one foot for every over 35. Still left a 35, a 30-foot rear yard setback. When you look at the dimensions of the school, say you adopt what everybody has on the rear yard, just leaving it 30, and side yard has fluctuation, they can still meet that. So, even if you just say, okay, the side yard's the only one we're going to change, the rear yard has to stay at 30. Because it is a corner lot, I do have the ability to switch which side is, is what. So, one, one side currently has, I want to say 36-foot setback, that's to the west, and the north has a 29-foot setback. So, if you look at the ordinance and say, you know, I just don't like having someone with a rear setback that's, you know, really close to someone's property, and you say, okay, it still has to be 30 feet, their west property is, is sitting at 36.6, so we can call that their west, or their, their rear yard. To the north would be considered the side yard. They're sitting right now at 29. So, if you said that the side yard setback would be 20 feet plus one foot for every foot over 35, their side yard would need to be 23 feet. So, they would meet that. So, staff is, is on the screen and in your staff report kind of has given some, some recommendations to the change. The other one that I didn't mention was the height restriction in the R2, raising it from 35 feet to 40. And then for the R3 and R4, just eliminating the, the height restriction altogether. In most R3, R4, R3 is along 5,600 south, R4 is east of 19 for most part. There's a section of R4 on the west side of 19, but it's where those townhomes are being built today. So, with that, staff would recommend approval as shown in your staff report. But again, the planning commission can make recommendations and change those if you would like.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Parkinson?
No. Are you sure the school won't go over 38 feet? We only give them a two-foot window.
And, and from what I've gathered from the architect, it is 38 feet on the northwest corner of the building. And that's the highest point of the building, because that's where the gym is.
Okay.
Well, as you go farther east and farther south, it drops down, because it's just two-story classrooms. Now, if they've redesigned it to be taller then, I'm going to tell them sorry.
All right. Anybody else have a question?
Do what?
Does anyone else have a question? If not, then I will open this for a public hearing. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we go to public hearing.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. We're now in public hearing. Anyone in the public want to come and speak to us about this?
You don't have to, if you don't want to.
There being no response, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Meeting, the public hearing is now closed. Steve, will you get?
Not until the vote's done.
Oh, we haven't voted. That's correct. Sorry. Okay.
Discussion or...
Yes. Does anybody have anything to say now that the public meeting's closed?
I do have one question for Steve. Have any of the neighbors commented?
They haven't sent any, sent anything to me. I know Commissioner Bills, prior to the meeting, had mentioned that some of the residents weren't necessarily happy. Most of those are on the west side of the school where it's 36 feet away. I think in most cases, it's, they go from a, a field, you know, sports, baseball diamonds and whatnot, to a building right next to them. So, I think for most parts, probably where their, most of their concern is, or issues are, just the building's all sudden now next to them.
But it's hard, you know, if they don't represent themselves here, but the process on this just seems a little bit backwards, that it's kind of the cart driving the horse, rather than, you know, us looking at it and saying, yeah, this is the, the right thing to go, do. But I know from just our previous conversations that it does have a very limited impact and the scope, you know, the changes that we make tonight really won't have a broad, broad impact across the, across the city.
It shouldn't. I mean, there's still a few occasions that, you know, may come up, but again, you know, I'm, I'm not going to die if you amend it to where R3 and R4 have a limit on height, or if you amend it that, you know, you'd rather have 25 feet plus one, you know. Just taking into consideration though, that what the school is needing versus what, what I've proposed. Most of this would probably not have come in, into problem if their architect engineer would have consulted with the city prior.
Which was a requirement by the district.
Which is requirement, not by the district, but also by the state. They're not excluded from everything.
Okay. Then, uh...
The chances of this affecting anybody after this are pretty slim, because there's not a lot of open lots.
You'll have an additional school that may come. You know, I'm, not all of them are in R2 zone or in R3 or R4. So, we didn't really, the proposals aren't necessarily change anything in the R1 zones.
Yeah.
Again, the R1, to me, is more single-family residential, where the R2, R3, R4 is multi-family. So, I didn't necessarily think it'd be a huge deal if things, you know, do occur. But again, it is still something, you want to protect those residents as much as possible.
A new school will come with a new set of facts and we...
Right. I mean, a, a single-family home can be 35 feet tall. So, in essence, you know, we're raising a, a non-residential building by five feet. Would you really see a, a huge difference if I put a 35-foot home next to your property? And in this case, it could be 25 feet from your property versus 30 or whatever it happens to be. So...
Okay.
You know, in some senses, yeah, it, it does seem huge that you can have a 40-foot building next to my property, but a single-family home can be 35.
It could be within five feet of that, that limit. Okay.
So...
Any other questions?
No.
Then I will entertain a motion as to item number five, the public hearing at 6:00 P.M.
I recommend approval of the proposed changes as, as laid out in exhibit A of the proposed changes.
And this is for agenda item number five, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Calley?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparr?
Aye.
Commissioner Karas?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Brand?
Aye.
Commissioner Payne?
Aye.
Passes, and again, this is on March 19th.
On March 19th.
City Council.
Now, we can let Samantha back in.
Yep. Samantha, you out there?
If she didn't go home.
We'll move to item number six, which is the commissioners' minute. And I will entertain any comments from any of the commissioners about pretty much anything.
What is that group supposed to get back with us when we do our next meeting with them?
For?
Like for the economic development thing, the ruling 2025.
General plan.
The plan update.
Okay, I'll answer that in my staff report.
Steve, you have anything of the commissioners?
Well, yes.
All right, then go ahead.
The answer, Commissioner Collins', question is, for the ordinance itself, that's talking, you know, mixed use downtown in the front-runner station. Excuse me, we were going over finite details last week, you know, looking at properties, how should we zone? Some of them are close to residential. Should we, you know, split them? Should we make it all high-density and whatnot? And then also language of, of kind of the roads within the, the downtown, how to approach it, you know, east of 19, west of 19. So, I'm hoping that they're done within a few, you know, a few weeks to a month, which will, then we'll come back to. They may want to have a, another joint meeting with city council planning commission to, to kind of discuss it, or they may want to just start with you guys and then go with them. As for the general plan update itself, last week was a banner week. We had, we went to the high school and sat down with one particular civics class and discussed, you know, their thoughts and opinions of what Roy should look like in the future, what they like, what they don't like. So, everything that you guys went through, they went through. It is kind of funny what, hear what, what teenagers are concerned about versus what adults are concerned about. We went, when we went through that pictorial survey of what you like, what you don't like, we tried to, you know, steer them so, okay, do you like that type of building? But all they saw was, oh, that's a Wendy's. Yes, I love it. Oh, that's a tent. Yes, I, you know. Rather than, does the building look good or does it look bad? But, you know, you can't, teenagers aren't going to think what they want anyway.
Substance over form.
Yeah. Then we did, that same day, we invited every business that had an email. We sent a request for them to come to a meeting, to sit down with us, to again, discuss their concerns and desires of, of the community. Of the 156 emails I sent out, can anybody guess how many came?
Four.
Five. Which is okay. I mean, again, we, it was across the board. One was a home, home occupation. You know, four were actual businesses. You know, they gave some insight of, of their concerns, their thoughts, their desires, things they like, dislike and stuff. So, I mean, to me, I thought it was a good meeting. You know, I wish there was 20 or 30, but when we redid the sign ordinance and I emailed out, we had three. So, it was actually more people this time than last time.
So, you're doing a better job, is what you're trying to tell us.
Or they're just new people that are wanting to, to do it. And then that same night, and they've done two of these, so again, Wednesday was a very busy day. They've done what's called a, a front room discussion. So, they've got, I want to say, three or four, so they've already done two, where they contacted an individual saying, hey, we'd like to come to your front room. Will you invite some of your neighbors to just come sit down and discuss with us? So, they've done a couple of those already. It does look like we may go back to the high school. She said that she had an AP class that might have a different view and opinion, because they're more college-oriented and wanting to, you know, professional career versus, I've got to take this because if I don't, I don't graduate high school type of mentality. So, we, we may go back there, and again, like I said, they may have another one or two front room discussions. So, they're, they're pushing forward. They may actually finish sooner than they thought. So...
Will I have another advisory council?
Yes, they'll, they'll have one more, one or two more of those.
Okay.
And when do they plan to push that survey out to the public? Because they talked about making an effort to...
Right now, it is on, if you go to the community development website of roycity.org, royutah.org, there's a, a link that you can click on it and go right to that survey. I can't get it, unfortunately, I can't get it on the main page, just the way the design is. The link would be at the bottom, and when you first come on it, you know, it's got a picture, five buttons. And if you don't know, that you can scroll down. To me, that's really the main page and what it looks like. They're just not able to put anything on there to draw your attention to, to go to it. So... Kind of the fault of the design, I guess.
Put some words that says scroll down for more?
Uh, not that I've found. I mean, I could ask him. He said we could put it on the news flash and/or public notice, but again, those are at the bottom of the main page. So, unless you scroll down, you'll never see it. Those that are subscribed to the, the website and say, you know, I want to have all public notices come to me, or news flashes, then they get them. But most people don't, you know, subscribe to those type of things. More, they're more interested in what the agendas are and for the city council, not planning commission. So, we're trying to, you know, reach out to others that normally wouldn't. So... They did ask for the steering committee to have a high school student on it. We do have one. She's a junior, so even if it goes till December, January, she'll still be around to, to help. I do have one, it's a dentist. We wanted some sort of business person to be on it, so he's shown interest in it. So... Other than that, you see the construction going on here on 19 and 45. Midland Drive and 4,000, that's starting to ramp up again. The developer sold it to somebody, so they're looking at the last comments and trying to revise everything to accommodate everything. All the zoning requests that you had last meeting was approved by the city council. They didn't approve it for R1.7. They approved it for R1.8, which really didn't make much of a difference, because the widths of properties are the same, and you can only get homes on each side of a road. So, the, the developer didn't really care. So, trying to think, that's about it.
Has Harmon started their gas station?
Yep.
Yes. Came by tonight, and there's a pile of dirt.
Yep. They've started that, forgot about that.
And the Burger King's well underway?
Yep. They've already got signs on the building, so I don't need to announce it.
Well, that's a good sign, says, means that Harmon's will stick around.
Yeah.
I hate to see them move out of that, that'd be another big piece of property sitting there with a lot of.
I mean, Harmon's owns the land all the way up to the, to the street, I mean, to the side of them, they don't necessarily, and they were very particular, they didn't want anything in front of them. So, you know, even if the new ordinance came down or came out and was there, we wouldn't be able to get anything in front of them anyway. So, to at least have some sort of use that they personally put in front of them, is, you know, it only helps.
So, they legally protected their view.
What was that?
They legally protected their view.
Yes. Even though a grocery store, you need, really need to protect it. If I'm going to Harmon's, I know where Harmon's is at, even if I can't see it, similar to Walmarts and other big, big stores, so.
Okay.
I believe that's about it.
There being no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I love the hesitation there.
Well, we had to let him make the second, because that was the, that was your duty tonight.
Alright.